Joyce Manwaring, Parks and Recreation Director.
Patrick Goff, City Manager.
Kristy Davis, District Two.
Mike Snacks, District Three.
Joe Demond, District Four.
Joyce Jade, District Two. He's giving me a hard time over here.
Bud Starker, District One.
Heather Guyer, Administrative Services Director.
Steve Art, Economic Development and Urban Renewal.
Tracy Lingworthy, District Four.
Larry Schultz, City Treasurer.
Chris Randall from the Court.
Tim Perano, Public Works.
Nathan Mosley, Administrative Services.
Davis Freinhardt, Council District One.
Sherri John, Senate District Twenty, State Senator.
So Mayor Jerry Otulio.
You want me to start? Oh, yes. I'm State Representative Sue Schaefer. I live in Paramount Heights. Very honored to represent Wheat Ridge, Golden, and Edgewater. It has been a long day, Senator John. So my brain is back here now. Thank you.
Thanks. So what we'll do is because Ms. Schaefer has to leave a little early, let's go ahead and start dinner, and then we'll come back around and we'll start the meeting while we're having dinner. How's that? So Mike or Bud or anybody who wants to start, go for it. Fall back in with staff comments. So Ms. Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry to interrupt your dinner here, but I'm very honored to be here and bring you a report from the General Assembly. First, though, I'd like to really commend our police chief and our mayor and Patrick Goff, our manager who came to Senator John's and my public town hall meeting a week or so ago where we had about seventy people, and the topic was on community safety, including gun safety and mental health and what all of us can do as leaders of our community to make people feel that we live in a safe community, which we certainly were reassured by from the Chief of Police and Senator Mo Keller from the Mental Health Colorado. So I could start by also commending Steve Art and Davis, who hosted a very effective meeting a couple of weeks ago here on connecting the dots of how we can create a climate of job creation, entrepreneurship, and innovation. Steve has produced a wonderful handout here, and I believe, Steve, you'll be talking to this, right? So I won't go through all of that right now, but Steve has emerged as a leader down at the state Capitol on economic development matters, and I'm very proud of him, and I've seen so many improvements in Wheat Ridge just over the last year or two with businesses coming in, parks going up, and more pedestrian-friendly routes and things like that, Thirty-Eighth Avenue improvement. That's all very good, according to the constituents that have called me about these things. I wanted to talk a little about some legislation. I understand that you're very concerned about the firefighter bill and the collective bargaining bill, and I don't know if you've all taken a position on that. I understand the Colorado Municipal League is very much opposed to that bill, but it's my understanding that the governor is close to a common ground, or at least a middle ground on that bill. So I always like to work for compromises. That's why I look a little ragged right now. I've been working all day on compromising regarding high school interscholastic sports and licensing naturopathic doctors, and should they be licensed, and other, you know, controversial topics down there. The things that I'm working on first would be in this handout that I can, I will pass around in a minute, but I'm, I will be working on the gun safety issues, in case any of you want to let me know what your opinion is on these gun safety issues. It's my understanding that this week there will be at least three bills introduced about gun safety. That will, that first one would be universal background checks for people who are purchasing a new gun, to ask the purchaser of a gun to pay a fee for the background check, and one other one, I'm not real sure what it is. Oh, limiting the rounds or the clips that the gun would be able to fire. So I know this is controversial, but my daughter lives twenty miles from Newtown, Connecticut, and we've had vicious deadly assaults in Colorado from Aurora to Columbine High School. And my contacts from constituents are running in favor of doing more on gun safety. Maybe we can't have a perfect law or laws on gun safety, but to at least try to do a little bit more that's reasonable and responsible. I'm sponsoring a bill on mandatory reporting of senior abuse. We all have a lot of seniors in our city, as you know, and I believe that abusing a senior is as wrong and harmful as abusing a child. So this bill will be asking for mandatory reporting for anybody that observes abuse or financial exploitation of a senior, or for anybody who even suspects abuse, physical abuse or financial exploitation of a senior. So that one's coming up. I'm on both health committees, and we're working to expand Medicaid, and so far, the Department of Healthcare Financing and Polic- Healthcare Policy and Financing is seeing some positive savings on the Medicaid expansion in the form of fewer visits to the emergency room and fewer x-rays taken, redundant x-rays taken, CTs, you know, unnecessary CTs and x-rays being taken, and now being reduced. So in the long run, I expect that this Medicaid expansion will be a benefit to the state to reduce the cost to the state for people getting healthcare early in a preventive mode rather than having to go to the emergency room for their care. And of course, the big bills will be jobs bills, you know. How do we create a climate in Colorado for businesses to relocate here, and as important, our businesses that are already here to stay here? That's really one of my priorities, to keep the ones that we have and create the climate for new ones to come in and to relocate here. So, let's see, what else? Education, we're possibly looking at a bill that would create a funding stream that's stable for K-12 and college education. Do we want to have every two or three years an emergency, emergency three A and three B, like we had this year? And thank you all that supported three A and three B. It was quite a surprise, actually, that it passed as well as it did. That leads some of us to believe that our citizens understand that without a solid education for all of our students, it's going to be very hard to have good jobs and a good economy in Colorado. The last one I'll mention I'm working on is protecting the Colorado Health Benefit Exchange. This is the one that's lined up with the Affordable Care Act, and again, will provide medical insurance for some of our eight hundred thousand people who do not have any medical insurance at this time. So I'll stop with that and just let you know that the reason I need to leave early is that my brother-in-law is dealing with a terminal illness, and my partner is his caretaker and is having difficulty managing all this, so I just need to be with my family tonight. I think you all understand that we're all committed to our jobs here as elected officials and appointed officials, but we have to take care of our families. So I can stay around until about seven thirty. Would be happy to answer any questions, and I thank you all for dinner tonight, and Senator John, I believe you might be next.
You're next.
Well, I always, yeah, time, done. I always like coming to just hear kind of where everyone is at. Representative Schaefer did bring up some of the bills that are going to be a little more controversial, and I have to be honest with you, in all of the years I've been there, there was another bill that really, really bothered me that I would go back and change my vote on if I could. When I go through legislation, I try so hard to just really go inside and really go in because the devil is in the details. And I have to tell all of you, I will stand up and I'll walk the line for all of you to smack me one time, because I really, 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 the vote on Senate Bill Twenty-Five has been very difficult for me, very, very, very difficult for me. I was asked to give the governor more time to work on this bill, because I do know that he's not happy with it the way that it is. And sometimes you work in the political world where, you know, you do come to agreements and you try and help where you can, so just know that I truly, truly am so understanding of your positions in local control and that you have every right to be upset, and I will accept that, because it was a very, very tough vote for me.
because it was a very, very tough vote for me. That being said, I actually have signed on to a bill with Representative Amy Stevens. We work very well together. She's over in the House. We are working with the department who has signed off on this. It's very exciting for our little business world to create a tax court so that businesses will have someplace to go that has the expertise. I can't give you the details, because we're just working on it. But it's something that has been talked about for a very, very long time. It won't cost any more money, because the systems are already in place. It will just be a way for us to funnel issues to the right direction. So, I'm excited about that. I'm trying to think of what I'm carrying, y'all. It's nothing like, oh, wow. I am working on a wildfire issue that would be incredible if we can pull it off, but it's not anywhere yet where I can really talk about it with the, and get the details out there, because we don't have them yet. We're working, working with some national experts on that. Representative Schaefer, do you know what I'm carrying? My aide told me today I have fifteen bills. Well, most of them are coming over from the House, so I'm not sure what they are. Oh, I know one. I'm working with the DAs and Representative Holbert on a bill. You know how our law enforcement runs into situations where they'll pull somebody over, and of course, they've had insurance, they buy the policy, they pay for one month, and they no longer have insurance. And so, the DAs are working with us on trying to figure out a hammer for people that are fraudulently claiming that they have auto insurance, and they do not. So, we're trying to work that issue out. It's been a huge issue, I know, for many, many years. But anyway, I just really want to hear from you all. I do know that the gun legislation is going to be huge. I have not taken a position on anything yet. Two things that make extreme sense to me, as I've talked to everyone, and yes, I do call, I do call everyone back, and so I have had many lengthy discussions with many of the NRA members, as well as people just wanting more. And I have to tell you, it's about fifty-fifty. It is just about fifty-fifty on the contact we get from both sides. People that want more, people that want none. And I do call them all back. They've all been very, very kind. So, even in talking to them, I have to tell you, it leans stronger that they would support something where you do a background check, even on private sales. They say, who cares? I think you have to work up the details out on that. And then the other thing that makes sense to me is the background check of ten or twelve dollars that people pay for their own. That seems to be making sense to me right now, from everyone that I've talked to and kind of playing it through. Have not taken a position on any of the others, but then I hear they're starting in the House, so have not seen any of them. But I think that we have to be very thoughtful, and I think we have to be careful, realizing that we have a western state, for crying out loud. I'm from Sterling. But anyway, there you go.
Thank you. So, I know that the city council and the city staff worked together on some positions, and we were going to go around and have our department heads give their feedback to the representatives and senators, and then we'll come back to the council, too. So, I guess we'll start with the chiefs, since I'm sure he has a PowerPoint presentation tonight for the... Chief, can you turn your mic on, please?
Regards to the mandatory reporting of abuse to seniors, from a law enforcement perspective, I think from a city perspective, we're supportive of that. There, there is, you know, a fiscal piece to that, that I think, you know, we need to understand. Today, when we call the Department of Human Services, when we've got a senior who we think is in danger or may need some assistance, there's not a lot of resources there. It's not like it is on the child welfare side. You know, if you have a child who's being abused or neglected, they're not as heavily staffed on the senior side. And so, sometimes, you know, it's a phone call, and you leave a message. You don't get anybody that comes out right away. It is something that we routinely encounter in Wheat Ridge, because we have a heavy demographic when it pertains to seniors. But we are supportive of the bill and bringing some resources there, as long as you all understand that, that there's going to be a need for additional staff from human services, and probably some additional training that may, may need to be done statewide, much like we did with, with the child abuse, child neglect, and the sex abuse kinds of things. Overall, you know, from a public safety perspective, the city's perspective is, is that local control of services is, is what's paramount. We are concerned about the collective bargaining that, for firefighters, it's, it's a very broadly-based piece of legislation that really gives all of the power to, to unions and very little power to municipalities or special, you know, local government. And I've been told that there may be a peace officer bill of rights that may be coming forward this, this year. I've not seen that. But I can tell you that, that adding to the expense of litigation, you know, disciplinary processes, collective bargaining for, for salaries and stuff really takes away, you know, a local municipality's ability to, you know, determine its own course. And those agencies, departments, cities, counties that have collective bargaining generally have it for a reason, and those that don't, don't for a reason. That's generally because they take care of their employees and they have the right processes in place. So, we would strongly be opposed to any, any legislation that would grant collective bargaining or, or, you know, union, union base to public safety. Let's see here. Very supportive of state and community-based intervention, prevention, and rehabilitation programs. Any state initiatives that respect the key role of communities and local government officials in determining service levels would be very, very helpful. Emergency services, emergency preparedness are very, very important to, to local municipalities, as they are to the counties and the states. So, you know, funding as it pertains to emergency preparedness, even for a community like Wheat Ridge, is really important. And having gone through a, a storm, the storm of two thousand and nine, I realize, as Chief, and I think our elected officials do, too, that, you know, there's some pretty significant impacts there in anything that, that you can do from a state perspective to help us in regards to the provision of emergency services, whether it's, you know, the prevention, the mitigation, or response aspect would be pretty helpful. Certainly, you're going to have a lot of gun bills. We've seen a, a few of those there. And the city's position on, on, on gun control and, and the regulation of firearms, you know, is, is to, is to not interfere with a municipality's ability or authority to, to, to regulate firearms. We don't have anything specifically from an ordinance perspective as it pertains to a lot of these gun issues. They're, they're state, they're state mandated, but I would ask that you keep the municipality's ability to, to regulate firearms in consideration as you look at some, some of the gun bills. I think we're generally supportive of, you know, gun legislation that keeps guns away from those who are criminals and those who are otherwise ineligible to possess guns. So, legislation as it pertains to, you know, responsible gun ownership, I think from a city perspective, would be, would be helpful. And, and you're going to have a ton of, of crazy bills to look at there. So, if I can be a resource for you on that, the state chiefs have not taken a position on a lot of the gun bills yet. They'll do that this week at their mid-year conference. So, so I can certainly share and be a resource if, if you need any assistance with that. And Judge, I think you've got a couple, a couple of things at the bottom of the list there, if you wanted to cover, cover those. But as it pertains to state surcharges on municipal fines.
Yeah, I really can't pass on the wisdom of any legislation, or whether it's good or bad or constitutional.
Judge, can you use the microphone, please?
Unconstitutional, but... I know the, the surcharges that I see, the, the position the city attorneys have taken and the position that the municipal judges have taken is that we're home rule city and they don't apply. So, also, so I guess part A is they, they don't apply to us unless it's specifically so states in the legislation. And then also, we're already, we have our own court costs. I mean, we have court costs that have these various fees that are built into them and surcharges for this and costs for that. And it's just, there's a point at which, you know, the court costs are going to exceed the fine at some points, and I don't know that that's, that's where we want to go. What was the other one, Dan?
Limitations on municipalities to enforce their own ordinances.
Yeah, I didn't take a look at that again. I, I can't pass on whether or not that's a good idea or a bad idea. I can't give advice like that, but, you know, there's a reason we have this, the system where you have municipal, county, district, federal, that alignment. And it's for municipal ordinances are to address municipal, local issues. And I'd certainly suggest it remain like that. I don't think the district courts want to address municipal crimes or vice versa.
Chief, were you referring to a specific bill on surcharges or municipal courts?
No specific surcharges that I'm aware of right now.
I think there's just the general unease amongst all the municipal judges to any time the state says, we're going to tack on this surcharge, and we're going to require this unfunded mandate. It's, I think there's a general opposition to it by all the municipal judges.
And then I just had three, three bills that, that I saw on the chief's legislative tracker that just briefly, if I can cover with you. House Bill Thirteen Ten Forty-Six. House Bill Thirteen Ten Forty-Six. It's a bill concerning employer access to personal information through electronic communication devices. This is really sort of specific to social media, and it's a bill that would not allow employers, for any reason, to, to look at an employee's social media site. That's troubling from, particularly from a law enforcement perspective, because what employees, and there have been a number of cases throughout the United States, sometimes inappropriately post things that may be evidence-based, related to a case, or, or may make statements that are inflammatory. There are a number of cases that have ended up in, in court where a defense attorney has discredited a law enforcement officer. We do access, ask employees to voluntary, voluntarily allow us, when we're going through the hiring process, to look at their social media sites to make sure that there's not anything on there that might be prohibitive. But it seems like an overextension into, to protection of, of certainly somebody's First Amendment rights, but there are certainly some employer concerns that go along with that. And I'd just ask that you look at that as that works its way through the legislative process. We are trying to work with the bill sponsors to amend that. But if it does totally prohibit our ability to look at that, it could be, it could cause some, some issues down the road from a, both a court perspective and a law enforcement perspective. House Bill Thirteen Ten Seventy-Seven. It's a bill concerning a driver's right to challenge the lawfulness of a law enforcement officer's initial contact in an administrative proceeding for revocation of a driver's license. So, this is related to DUIs. I stop somebody for, for a DUI, and they refuse to take a, a blood or a breath test, or they're over the presumptive limit. And I fill out a DMV paperwork that results in an administrative hearing, not a, not a criminal hearing, but an administrative hearing in regards to their right to have a license. Generally, what, what will happen is if they lose that administrative hearing, they can have their license suspended or revoked for up to, to a year. It's been in place, well, for thirty-five-plus years, ever since I've been in law enforcement. The bill now would, is being sponsored by Representative Salazar, would, instead of focusing on, you know, the administrative piece of, of, of the person's refusal to take a blood or a breath test or being over the presumptive limit, would now allow a driver to challenge the probable cause for, for the stop, which is really part of the due process piece, which should be determined in a court of law and not in an administrative hearing. So, what we'd like to see with this particular bill, as it works its way through, is, is either to have it killed or amended, because it really gets into the probable cause basis of the stop, which is part of the criminal proceeding, not necessarily the administrative proceeding. And then House Bill Thirteen Ten Ninety-Seven, concerning the duties of coroners. This bill is being driven primarily by two coroners, coroner from Douglas County and the coroner from Laramo County, who are trying to put in place procedures and protocols as it pertains to death investigations that would literally allow coroners to, to take away some of the investigative responsibilities for local law enforcement when it comes to investigating the cause of death or suspicious deaths. So, it's one that we'd ask you to, to, to look at. And certainly, if it looks like it's going to work its way out of, out of the subcommittee, then maybe we can have a further discussion in regards to the bill and the issues that it might bring for law enforcement. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I just wanted to ask if the Chiefs Association sends out a regular update on your positions on all these bills. That would be helpful. I imagine you do, but I don't know that I'm getting it yet.
I, I've just got the last one, and a lot of our positions are pending on that, but it's forty-two pages long. If you'd like me to share it with you, I'd be happy to do it. But I'll check with Ann Marie, our legislative lobbyist, on that as well.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Johnstone?
From a land use perspective, you have our general kind of position statement in your handout, so encourage you to, to read that. It probably looks a lot like it has in the past years. Obviously, local control is, is a recurring theme when it comes to local land use, building code regulations. And certainly, I think Steve will probably speak to urban renewal, but we certainly see that as a, as a city that's trying to encourage revitalization along our corridors, need all the tools in the toolbox when it comes to those efforts and urban renewal is part of that toolkit. But I would like to speak specifically to three pieces of legislation, and not necessarily take a position on them, but maybe raise some, some things for you to be considering as those, as those bills move their way through the process. House Bill Eleven Thirty-Three regarding plumbing and electrical codes for schools has resurfaced again, as it has in past years. Essentially, what that would do, and I'm not exactly sure what the genesis of this is, but would, would allow school districts to choose to use a local jurisdiction for their building code inspections as it pertains to plumbing and electrical codes. The current framework is that the, the state has control in that area and conducts all plumbing and electrical inspections. And in fact, the local jurisdictions are precluded from, from inspecting school-owned properties as they're remodeled or built from scratch. We generally don't oppose having the ability to do that. I mean, I think we have an ability to inspect, you know, other buildings as they're built in the city and feel that's an important role in the city. We do locally adopt building codes, including plumbing and electrical codes. Generally, those are fairly similar across jurisdictional lines, but we do it sometimes, you know, have, have different local amendments in our jurisdiction as well, and I'm sure that's true across the state. So, the proposed process, as I understand it, is it would make it optional for school districts on an annual basis to choose at their discretion, at their sole discretion, whether they would like to use the, the local jurisdiction. Now, presumably, they do that in consultation with the local jurisdiction. We have some minor concerns as it comes to kind of the logistics of that, the fact that they could do that on an annual basis and choose to go one direction one year and different direction another year. The change would take place on the state's fiscal year, so it would be mid-year for us from a budget standpoint. Some minor concerns, again, with the possibility that, you know, what about ongoing projects that maybe start in one cycle and the rules change mid-cycle, and how you handle some of those logistics? But I'm sure we could work with that. Our bigger concern is that the, the draft legislation just addresses inspections. So, it just gives the school districts, again, the ability to, at their discretion, decide to use the local inspectors. It doesn't speak directly to kind of the rest of the process for us, which would be reviewing building permits, the plan review process, issuance of building permits, so that, you know, at the start of a project, you know what your approved plans it is and what you're building to. It does, it does not necessarily address locally adopted codes. Again, we do have, could have some amendments from the state adopted. Again, we do have, could have some amendments from the state to adopt electrical and plumbing codes. Um, and it doesn't address fees. So we normally collect fees as part of a building permit that cover the costs of, uh, conducting our inspections, conducting our plan review. And again, the, the legislation as it's drafted strictly speaks to inspections, not kind of the rest of the process. So in summary, kind of not fundamentally opposed to the idea of, of we'd certainly be willing to inspect our schools. Uh, we think that'd actually be a decent role for us. Uh, but to quote Senator John, "The devil's in the details" in terms of how you'd implement that. So be glad to answer questions if you have, uh, follow-up on that. Uh, two other bills, Senate Bill twenty-seven, uh, which is another, uh, topic that we're revisiting, uh, as we have in the past. It pertains to RTD, uh, mass transit, uh, station parking facilities. Um, RTD historically has had, um, I guess little ability to kind of regulate or manage, uh, particularly the payment, uh, of fees for parking associated with their, their park and ride facilities, their light rail, uh, and commuter rail facilities. Um, in the last several years, they've been given a limited ability to charge for overnight parking and for people that park that are out of the district. So if you came into, say, an end-of-line station that was near the, uh, the perimeter of the RTD's district and wanted to park there, you could be charged a fee, uh, based on, I assume, license plate information. It, it's, um, it's been somewhat of a contentious issue, I think, just to the extent that, uh, there has been concern about the additional fees being potentially considered an additional form of taxation, uh, in addition to the, the taxation that our authority that RTD already has. I think many communities have pushed for, uh, some modifications to the legislation, particularly in the Denver metro area, uh, seeing it as, uh, giving RTD an ability to be more innovative in forming kind of public-private partnerships around parking and developing parking structures and that really support transitory development, which is a big, I think, goal of the region and increasingly so as we invest in fast tracks. So I think that, that's kind of the intent of many communities is that they see the, the, the potential of RTD charging fees as a way to manage the parking supply, but also as a way to generate revenue that can help offset some of those significant costs, uh, of funding, uh, parking structures, which are going to make much more efficient use, uh, of the land around transit stations. Again, particularly as we start to build out the fast tracks. I sometimes can't exactly figure out the legislative intent of bills when I read them. So I can't tell you absolutely what the intent of this is, but my read on it is that it would allow private parking facilities to be built in proximity to the station, uh, by kind of non-RTD entities and those entities could charge for parking. What I don't think that it does, um, and this is not a criticism of the bill, uh, is, is that it, it doesn't release in my mind, RTD from its obligation to provide whatever level of parking it committed to, typically through the environmental impact statement process. Uh, so they have a threshold of parking that they need to provide, and I think this bill doesn't change that. So there's still, uh, a certain amount of generally free parking with those two exceptions that I noted above. So I'm not sure exactly how much it accomplishes, but I don't think it does much harm in terms of any concern with additional taxation. I think it's just another tool in the toolbox for cities to create an additional parking supply that could be managed, uh, and charged a fee for, that could offset, uh, the costs of constructing that parking. Yep? Senate Bill twenty-seven. Yep. Uh, the third one that I would like to speak to, um, I don't believe, I'm, I'm not sure that there's been legislation proposed in past years on this topic, but it's, it's Senate Bill fifty-two, uh, and the title is Transit Oriented Development Claims. It's an issue, uh, that pertains, uh, I think more generally to multifamily housing, particularly for-sale housing. Uh, there've been a, a number of, of major, uh, litigation situations in the for-sale condo market, uh, generally in the Denver area over the last several years. And I think the, the impact of those is that a number of those, of some fairly major multifamily for-sale housing developers have really gotten out of that business because the, the litigation has been so impactful, both financially and, uh, as I hear told emotionally, that these lawsuits are so. If you're, if you're familiar with construction litigation, it's incredibly complex and time-consuming and expensive, uh, involving attorneys, of course, but, uh, architects and designers, subcontractors, contractors, owners. It's very complicated litigation, uh, so a lot of heartburn. Uh, I think there's been some concern that some of that, uh, litigation has not been entirely legitimate. Uh, it's certainly something that I've heard, uh, in professional environments. Urban Land Institute has been tracking the issue. Uh, Dr. Cog has been tracking the issue and actually has a fairly high-profile working group that's been monitoring the situation. Uh, and that's ongoing. Uh, it's certainly a type of housing product that in the region we want to encourage, uh, our community included as we move forward. And again, not to be repetitive, but in terms of maximizing that investment in, in fast tracks. Uh, so I think the, my take on the general intent of the legislation, uh, is it appears to be, uh, pretty solid legislation. It's a couple of key things. Uh, it gives contractors the right to repair. So currently, uh, if, uh, say a homeowner association, a condo association wanted to sue over what they believe to be a construction defect, goes immediate, immediately into a litigation. The contractor isn't given an opportunity to actually repair what they, the alleged, um, you know, issue is. They're not allowed to address it. Uh, second, it commits the parties to a binding arbitration system with an arbitrator, uh, to agree, agreed upon by all parties, uh, as opposed to pumping them directly into the judicial system with those very complicated lawsuits that I, uh, attempted to describe. And third, it places a statute of limitations of six years on when, uh, those types of lawsuits, uh, could be pursued, particularly as I understand it, against the designers, so the architects, the engineers, uh, that designed the project. A couple of questions as, as, as you look at the legislation and maybe it's fine-tuned. One, uh, they define TOD, because that's the nature of the lawsuit, right? It pertains just to transit-oriented development, construction claims, is within a half-mile of commuter rail, uh, light rail and commuter bus stations. Uh, and I would just note that depending on, uh, how you interpret that latter, bus stations and the half-mile radius, that that's a very broad application, uh, because, you know, if you look at this, like a city like Wheat Ridge with bus routes on Wadsworth and Kipling and Thirty-Eighth and Thirty-Second, if you're, if, if you assume those, that some commuters are using those, uh, then it pretty much is going to apply to a large swath of the Denver metro area. Perhaps that's the intent. I'm not saying that's bad, but if, if the intent is really to focus on what we consider to be more, uh, transit-oriented development, which is usually around a fixed rail station, so a light rail or commuter rail station, then that, that definition may be too broad, but that may be the intent. And if that's the intent, that's fine as well. It may be a related note, but I'm not sure, the projects that I'm familiar with where some litigation has occurred, uh, that those are necessarily in traditional TODs. Uh, several have been in Denver proper, um, and I don't think, if the issue is really multifamily housing, I'm not sure the need for the specificity of TODs. But it is a focus of, of our redevelopment efforts in the region and our, and our, uh, investment in fast tracks. So it, perhaps it's one way to encourage more investments in those areas by, uh, by telling people that they're going to have less exposure, uh, in terms of that, um, that litigation. And six, uh, this is not my, my bailiwick of expertise, but I'm not sure whether six years is the right statute of limitations. It sounds kind of short to me, but I, you know, I don't know what, what the right number, uh, should be. And, and just a side note, Dr. Cog, as I mentioned, has this working group, uh, this moving forward. Uh, I, I don't think that's cause to not consider legislation, but just to be aware that that, they actually are going to be under contract with a, uh, an economic consulting firm, uh, over the next several months. Uh, they've selected the consultant and they're, uh, they're just beginning that project with, uh, a firm as economic and planning systems, uh, based in Denver, and they're going to be trying to quantify the impact of the litigation over the past several years that could give a little more context to the need for the legislation. But again, wouldn't, uh, be cause for me to, um, advise you to exercise caution in pursuing it, but just to be aware that that, that information will be forthcoming in the next several months as well and may, may add to the discussion.
Thanks. So, and I wanted to, uh, you know, keep in time with Sue, have to leave at seven-thirty. I know that Mr. Reinhardt is the CML representative for the city and Mr. Starker. So did you have anything you wanted to cover before Ms. Schaefer has to leave?
I can continue the meeting without me.
No, I know, I'm just, no, I'm just trying to get you as much information as I can, because there are representative CMLs. Mr. Reinhardt, did you have anything you wanted to else cover? Okay. Um, Ms. Jay?
Representative Schaefer, um, there's a bill on here that, that I'm interested in and, and maybe you could comment on it a little bit, uh, which is House Bill, uh, I think it's, uh, one-one-zero-eight, Special Fuel Tax and Electric Vehicle Fee. I'm interested in it because, as everybody knows, the federal gasoline tax hasn't had an increase in over twenty years. Um, and with more electric vehicles coming into the scene, we hope. Um, I'm wondering what this bill, whether it, what's the basis behind it that would kind of help alleviate our tax dollars for streets and highways?
Oh, thank you, Mrs. Joy. I'm not familiar with House Bill eleven oh-eight, was that the number? That was the number? Eleven-ten?
Eleven-ten.
House, eleven-ten, is it on, what, are you on a certain page of our packet here? I just, I'm sorry, I don't know about that bill.
That'd be great, yeah. Since I know you need to leave, I thought maybe you'd have some information.
I'm not on the local government committee, so that's...
I saw you on the energy, so I thought perhaps that would be a direction that, or you'd have some information.
Not yet, but you will keep us informed, won't you? Please, because I would like to know more about that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from counsel, Mr. Demont?
I have some regarding gun safety. I know there's certain things, I know, Sue, you mentioned, the, uh, universal background check, a misconception or something, maybe, I don't, or maybe I didn't hear you right. You said it was a background check on new guns. The universal background check would be for all guns, even private, um, selling, if I were to sell you a gun, you were to sell me a gun, uh, background check on that too. I need to say, you know, although it wouldn't have stopped any of, like what happened in Newtown, the, the gun was stolen, it wouldn't have helped that, but, um, I agree a hundred percent with universal background checks. I don't think there's any problem with them. Me and I would say anybody that I talk to about it, on either side of anywhere, um, I think it would help buyers of guns as well as sellers. A lot of times, you know, you go to a gun show to sell a gun, if there's a table to do a background check, that's great. If you're selling at private party and you can go to a gun shop and pay a small fee to do the background check, it's safe, everybody knows it's going to go through, there's five days, you know, whatever, or, you know, you gotta wait, sometimes that, well, six, eight days lately, but, you know, if you gotta wait a day or so to get it through, that's fine. I don't think anybody has a problem with that. I would support that a hundred percent. Another one you'll see is, they don't call it a background check, but they say a check for ammunition sales. And I'm not sure how deep they want to get with that as far as Colorado, the state, whatever comes to you. But I would, I would, uh, um, support that a hundred percent. I think what, what people are afraid of is building some sort of database and something that could be put into these bills that would build a database of what I buy, how much I have, you know? That's what they try to avoid. So that's the stuff that kind of gets iffy, but as far as a background check or any kind of check for ammunition sales, I don't, I don't think anybody would have a problem with that. I would support that a hundred percent. The, uh, the one regarding rounds of ammunition per magazine, I think that one is, is, uh, maybe, um, misunderstood. I, I understand the feeling of wanting to support that, but the speed at, at which you're, you're going to slow it down is not a factor. You know, I would, I would, you know, ask that you don't support that. But the other two, and I, I believe there's five of them, I think there's five of them you're going to see, but those are really the three that are going to be on your radar the most. But as far as background checks, universal background checks, it, and I don't know what else they're expecting from that, but I don't, I don't think you should have any problem supporting that. Have no problem supporting checks for ammunition and, uh, that's all I want to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. I appreciate hearing from all of you. And I know Senator John does too. You represent a lot of people. So thank you, Joe. It's good to hear your opinion.
Ms. Schaefer?
Um, yeah, I had a couple of bills that sort of affect the, the clerk's position here and, um, they're, they're fairly benign, but I just wanted to mention it so that you don't get a stray and vote against them. One is about, um, the remote applications for records and, um, what it, what it, oh, I'm sorry, um, ten forty-one, House Bill ten forty-one. And, um, that Brittany Peterson from Lakewood is one of the sponsors. Um, it's already been through the, passed through the local government committee and passed the House on second reading. But what it does is allow, in our case, the clerk's office to, when, when people request records, um, if it's something long and involved, that, um, we, we can already charge for research time. And, um, every municipality kind of has their own little schedule. We've compared and everybody's pretty much in the same ballpark, one way or the other, about how many pages you get for free and then so mu- so much per page after that. But what this does is allow the clerk's office to wait until they have received the money for payment. If they're, you know, if they request like a hundred pages of something, well, that costs. And, and a lot of times there's, um, research time by staff that, you know, can, can really add up. So w- w- we're currently allowed to do that, to charge for research time, shipping, so on, unless it's email, of course, and there's no fee for that. But what this would do would be allow the municipalities to collect the money first for, um, the shipping and whatever, research and stuff, and then have three days to get it, to ship it to them. Right now there's a three-day, you have to get to them within three days. But, um, it really, it's funny, I noticed in this, in the summary, it's sponsored by the Colorado Press Association, CML, Colorado Counties, special districts, um, the school boards, Attorney General's Office. And it has a, a note in here about, there was some clerk somewhere that wouldn't release some information. And so this is like, you have to release the information. But I see it sort of the other way is like, sometimes the press can, now they haven't done it to us, but I hear other clerks talk about, you know, just being bombarded with requests for information. And it, it can just overwhelm you. It's not that anybody's trying to keep anything a secret, but it can just kind of get to be a ridiculous burden. And all this does is allows you to collect the money first and then you get your information, if it's, you know, something big. Then there's another one, um, that's... Yeah, yeah, 'cause they get, well, they get the first fifteen minutes of research free, which is here. That's our policy, um, which usually, if it's building things upstairs, they can pull that out of the computer in a flash. And sometimes they email it, sometimes it's something that has to be mailed. And usually if it's some little fee, we just say, but I had a thing last summer, some company from California requested something and, and it was quite a few pages and it ended up being like thirty-two dollars or something. I called her and she said, "Okay," you know, and she said, "I'll send the check." And it, I mean, I looked at their website, they're a big firm, I don't think they're going to... Thirty-two dollars to them is nothing, so, um, we sent it right away. But this would allow the clerk to, to wait a little bit. And then, um, the other one, Senate Bill, um, forty-three, this is about liquor. The Restaurant Association is at it again. And really this is kind of benign too. Uh, and if you, if you've been to a casino, you know that gaming, uh, outlets, they have to have a sign that says, "No liquor beyond this point," kind of when you, when you leave the, the premises. What, um, what this bill would do would allow restaurants to do the same thing. And then it kind of, uh, it lessens their liability if, if someone does that. Um, the responsibilities on... The responsibility's on the drinker or the person who took the liquor out and, and not on the restaurant. And, but they also want to have, be able to make the signs smaller, I don't know what, what issue that is, but it doesn't seem like a bad bill to me, probably good. Oh, okay, good, good.
Well, Ms. Shaver, do you need to take off?
I'll have about ten minutes.
Okay. Did we have any more from staff or city council on questions or comments before Ms. Shaver takes off?
Yes, I actually found really no legislation that's involved in transportation that's of any note. The only thing I would like to do at this point would just be to acknowledge Director, C.D. Director Hunt's new program, the Ramp Program. I think that's a tremendous movement to break the, that. Dam down and allow those funds to now start flowing down into the projects. So, you know, three hundred million dollars is, is a significant amount of projects to see funded over the next four or five years in addition to the normal funding, so. Just wanted to let you know that we do recognize that and know it's a good thing, whether we get any of the money or not, it's, it's good for the state.
Thanks.
Tim, you weren't going to comment on the other notes we had? The rulemaking for stormwater and registration permits, that we had been given some notes that we had other issues, did I miss them?
Which one are you looking at? Oh, yeah. Yeah, I didn't have any real issue with them.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Tim. Did Steve or Joyce or Heather or Patrick have any comments or concerns?
I'll just go very, very quickly because council may not know, on a monthly basis, we do meet down at the Capitol in the early morning hours with a non-partisan. Makeup of elected officials who, if they care to attend, can, we talked about economic development issues. So a lot of these have been raised and, and will continue throughout the year. But certainly, I'm a board member of the Economic Development Council of Colorado. We are tracking a few bills which we think will, will very much help bring new business into the state as well as the city of Wheat Ridge. And as Ken said, having more tools in our toolbox is great. We have a very proactive city council right now that is really making Wheat Ridge known as a business-friendly environment. And I want to thank all of our council members for that, we are, certainly have a lot of interest from developers that we've never had before. But some of the legislation we're following, eleven forty-two on the enterprise zones, which will keep intact enterprise zones. Which will limit the amount to a million dollars that they will be able to receive on their, their credits. We at EDCC support that fully. We also support Bill ten oh one, the Advanced Industries, which will help to offer incentives to advanced industries in biomedicine. High technology aerospace, some of those we do have here in the city of Wheat Ridge that, that could really take advantage of those bills. So we encourage the, the support of that along with the governor to move that along. We also support SBDC Bill ten oh two, which will provide additional funding to the small business development centers. We as economic development professionals continually are getting phone calls from new businesses that want to open that have absolutely no experience. And we in Colorado are an entrepreneurial state, so we want to encourage those people to open new businesses. And the small business development centers certainly provide that training, guidance, along with the local municipalities and starting those businesses and making sure. That they're successful when they open rather than opening and then failing down the line, and that's even, even worse. We also encourage you, Bill eleven eighty-nine, the exemption in the personal property tax. Which was done in two thousand and thirteen, and I guess it ended in two thousand and thirteen, we encourage you to continue it into two thousand and fourteen.
I was going to ask you a question, so is that the bill that, which bill number is that, the one this year?
Yes, eleven eighty-nine. And so in, in the two thousand and thirteen bill, it allowed the county who controls the personal property tax to rebate back to a hundred percent, and we thought that worked great. Not a lot of businesses took advantage of it here in Jefferson County, but it certainly could be something that we could look forward to. And finally, we have not seen any, but we certainly anticipate that there'll be some legislation come along, limiting urban renewal authorities. Really about their reporting structure. We feel right now, all of our, as, as cities are, urban renewal, all of our reports are available for any interview, anytime, day and night. We have that, they're, they're calling it transparency, we feel we are transparent as it is. We are working with the Colorado Municipal League on all urban renewal authorities in the state of Colorado to do a standardized report. That would be submitted to Colorado Municipal League and then available on their website. We discourage bringing it to the state because in a time when the governor wants to make state government smaller, we feel this would grow state government, too. By making us submit this report to a state agency who would then review it for us. So we would encourage when that comes along that, that you would not support that bill. Mr. Goff, if you have any other?
Yeah, just any, any general attack on the authorities of urban renewals. You know, I think in Wheat Ridge, it's, it's a very important tool for us. We have a lot of infill redevelopment opportunities in Wheat Ridge. And those types of projects are more expensive than, than just straight green developments where you can build on a, a open pasture. They're very expensive with, with environmental contamination issues and transportation issues. So limiting our, that tool is going to really limit what redevelopment can happen in Wheat Ridge. So we appreciate any, just keeping the, or keeping your support for urban renewal and, and not amending the law anymore.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. John?
I just had to tell you, you'll be happy to know that I'm either sponsoring or co-sponsoring three of the ones that you brought up, Mr. Art, there you go. Just seeing it.
I am, I am highly, I am highly aware of that, yes, and we at EDCC are, are very honored to have you as a friend of business in the state.
Oh, Heather?
Just three bills that I'll mention that would be of interest. And the first bill, which the Colorado Municipal League is monitoring and the city will do the same, is the Governmental Immunity Act, the increases to those. It is Senate Bill thirteen twenty-three. And that would increase a one-time single occurrence of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to four hundred, to six hundred thousand dollars. And then injury to one person in any single occurrence to, I'm sorry, let me step back here, I've got my notes mixed up. Two or more persons in any single occurrence, the bill would increase damages limitation to nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So this impacts insurance. And my understanding, in terms of the background of how this bill is coming forward, is given the issues that we experienced last year. With wildfires and the different losses involved with some of those occurrences. So this is a bill that the city will continue to monitor at the point that it's out right now, we think these are reasonable increases in the bill. And so that's our position as of today.
The, the limits haven't been increased since, I think, nineteen seventy-two, I believe.
Yes.
And they came up, if you're not familiar with the bill, they came up with these proposed increases based on the CPI increases over, since that time. So, you know, I, I don't think, CML does not oppose the increases. But I think any, any additional or, or new challenges to governmental immunity would, would definitely be opposed. So we, we do, we do support the increases in the, in the limits, but, but we hope you'd support our governmental immunity in general sense.
Thanks, Patrick. Another bill is HB thirteen ten ninety-three. This is in regards to local government contract bidding, purchasing is one area that we believe we excel in here at the city of Wheat Ridge. In partnership with several regional, if not national, purchasing associations. And so Nate handed out an info sheet prepared by the Colorado Municipal League on HB ten ninety-three. And I'll just point out a couple of aspects. With this bill, you know, it, it points out that this is a one-size-fits-all measure and would eliminate the ability of municipalities to use the Request for Proposals, RFP, process. This really takes away our quality control measures that we have in place currently within our purchasing processes. And so that was, that's something that we'd like you to consider. Additionally, if you jump down to the section of the info sheet that talks about a competitive bid process, in particular with disposal of surplus goods. We currently use MAPO, which is the Municipal Association of Purchasing Officials. We use their bid to dispose of our surplus goods here at the city of Wheat Ridge. So again, just to reiterate, you know, this is a preemption of local control. And just wanted to point out a couple of the, the ways we're handling that. The other bill is HB ten ninety, it's a construction contract prompt pay. And we saw a bill last year which reduced the retainage. We believe that, along with the Colorado Municipal League, that this bill goes a lot farther than it should. It restricts the ability of private and public building owners to negotiate construction contract terms with contractors. And as noted in bullet one, this is definitely an attempt by subcontractors to write contract language favorable to them into state statute. I think there's purchasing practices in place that provide for safeguards and checks and balances. And this type of effort doesn't belong in state statute. So we'd be happy to answer any questions as these two bills move along in the process.
Well, thank you, Heather, I really appreciate having these. I was trying to Google the CML priority bills. And we had a little computer failure down at the Capitol, I know that never happens here, but now you have provided me and Senator John. You know, with the CML, some priorities for cities and towns, what's happening in two thousand and thirteen, House Bill ten ninety-three and ten ninety. So I appreciate having that information, and Senate Bill twenty-three, so we'll keep a lookout. When we know what your priorities are, we do keep our eye on those balls and try to be informed about them as they come through. So thank you all very much.
Sherry and Sue, I just have one kind of comment. My concern is this, whether it's Republicans or Democrats, when one party controls the House and the Senate and the governorship. There's always the chance that things run amok, and so all I'm asking is that, I've seen from you, I've seen from both of you that. Just to make and talk to your colleagues about making informed decisions based on common sense and not letting emotion get to you. We've had some tragedies, you know, last summer was the fire, the shootings in the, in the city, and those are tragedies, and we don't want to look past those, but. You also don't want to pass knee-jerk types of legislation that would harm, cause some uncon- on, some consequences that were unattended. So all I'm asking for is remind your colleagues to use some common sense and make some informed decisions based on facts and figures and representing their constituents, but not on emotion, so. That's all I have to say.
Well, I appreciate that comment because we have the possibility of overreacting since the Democrats control the House, the Senate, the governor's office. So I, I mean, my objective is to be reasonable, common sense, moderate, the way we are here in Wheat Ridge. And I also have Golden and Edgewater, but I don't believe in going off either edge. Senator John has been my role model and Senator Keller, I think we have all tried to be moderate, common sense, reasonable people. Like the people in Wheat Ridge are. So, Mr. Mayor, we'll do our best on that, okay?
Thank you. Anybody else, any questions or comments before we move on to the next party? Sherry, do you have any?
No, I just, I really appreciate it when you take the time to call, email me very quickly, text me on my phone. Does everybody have my cellphone? You probably really should have my cellphone. And if you're going to email me these days, please email to the state address, because I don't have time to check my personal one once every two to three days. So my cellphone is three zero three six six seven one one eight six. And sometimes things are coming through very, very quickly, we have your contact information. If that is the quickest way to get ahold of you, I think in the departments, we can fairly quickly get ahold of you. Because sometimes amendments are coming through very, very quickly, and we really do care about what the city thinks on these issues. So thank you for taking the time out on your night to listen to us.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Certainly. I'd like to thank whoever put this research booklet together. You just do such a, I always do such an awesome job. None of our other cities have something like this.
No, that's fine. Thanks for coming.
Our pleasure.
You're dismissed.
Dismissed, yay! My dog will be so happy, it's before nine o'clock tonight. I did run home in between the lines, alright.
Thanks for coming.
I guess we'll move on to elected official reports, I wanted to pass out this memo that we received from Ed Tower. Ed Tower was here last week, he talked about a, a stormwater type of discussion, I want to pass this to the council members. And see how you wanted to proceed or, you know, I don't have a problem signing one and sending it off as mayor, if you want to send one off as council. It's a, it's a draft, it's basically a template for anybody who wants to send off this information. So I'll pass that out now. The copier had a little bit of a problem on the front, but it's, I think you can read it still. Do you want to talk about that?
I'm fine, Jerry, I mean, it's not bad. We. I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of doing it, so.
Okay, can we get your attention, please, we can go ahead and wrap this up? Bud, did you want to say, let's try to wrap it up here, so I passed, we passed out this memo. The question is, let's maybe read it and maybe we could talk about it again at the next council meeting, under elected officials matters, we could sign it. The other thing I wanted to pass out real quickly was this memo from the Jefferson Center for Mental Health, they're having their annual, not annual, they're having their gala fundraiser. And as you know, they're a large business, nonprofit in the city, they have about two hundred employees, they service Wheat Ridge residents and the high school. They run the Summit Center in District Two, and they're having the gala fundraiser, and each table is five thousand dollars. And so my request was to look at one or two tables. My, my concern was this, I think the police department should be there, too, as a table, because they do the crisis in, crisis intervention training at the high school. Joe Casa does a great job with that, and we have the Summit Center in District Two. So one table could be for elected officials and city staff, and the other table at five thousand dollars could be for the police department, because they're really involved in the Jefferson Center for Mental Health. So I, I wasn't asking for a decision tonight, but I wanted to give you the, the input that each table of ten is five thousand dollars. And like I said, they were, their funding was cut by the county by a hundred and seventy thousand this year, so anything we can do as a city, because they're a local business in our community and they service a lot of folks, would be great. One table is five thousand, two tables is ten thousand, and I thought it'd be kind of really showcase Wheat Ridge if we had the police department there as one table. With their spouses and, you know, Joe Casa, Dan Brennan, and whoever needs to be there, and then also an elected official table for us as. for us as council and mayor and staff too. So, it's up to you, really.
Just a question. That's, I was trying to remember what our overall donating was, and that seems to sort of dwarf. Am I missing something? Is that a lot more than we've given to other groups? What's our...
Well, in the past, we had, we don't, I don't think we give to them yearly. This is, because they don't have this fundraiser every five years. So, I think the last time we did this...
This is our 55th anniversary celebration thing. So, it's not an every-year deal. It's just an anniversary deal.
You know, we did about five years ago at the Arvada Center, and I think that year, that was even before you were on, I think. We had a table, and it was a thousand or two. And then, but now, this is the new schedule. So, it's kind of up to you guys if you want to talk about it, maybe put it on the agenda for next Monday. I don't, you know, however it needs to be done. Anybody have any? I'm sure they would appreciate any type of... Joey, do you have some comments too? Davis, do you have any comments, concerns?
It, 10,000 just seemed too much to me. I didn't really care which, how we call it, half that or whatever. But it felt like more than we give to other comparable organizations to me as well.
I do know that a $5,000 sponsorship would be really a good show for the city since this is once every 55 years, basically, so.
And I'd be willing too to donate through my outreach budget to reach a certain level, whatever we can do.
Okay, that's an option too.
Kind of in the past, it's been a little difficult to fill one table sometimes. So, I'd be cautious about getting two unless you really have the 20 people signed up.
Well, let me, is it, am I, under the, can I ask a question procedurally? What I'm, I'd like to sort of, I know, to sort of get a sense from all of your, what, I'm gonna bring something back next time with a specific recommendation for us to come on. I'd like to just actually briefly hear what range of thoughts people might have just to put my, put it together. George, you got a sense of what feels like the right amount to you?
I think I need to look at this a little bit more.
Okay.
I tend to agree that my first reaction is, is that seems, that seems like quite a bit, but, you know, we can, I'll dive into it more.
Ms. Davis, I'm sorry. Do you got a range and start for a starting point? Well, we won't make a decision, but...
I do think that we should support them, but I'm also fine with the Sapphire sponsor. But, I mean, if there's other people that want to up that and use their individual outreach, you know.
Sure, yeah, okay. Mr. Stites?
I think you need to support it, but Sapphire's fine with me.
Ms. Jay? Mr., I think I already, I got a guess where, so I'll put something together for the next one to throw out there, and people can then move from there.
As an option, would you guys look at two Sapphire tables if we had the police department involved, so 4,000? Was that another option? It would be from their budget, probably. Talk to, whatever.
Once, I just want to say one more thing. I, the Jefferson Center has been in Wheat Ridge for 55 years. Their office is on I-7 in Kipling. They, you know, continually support the businesses around us. And, you know, what they do is just immeasurable. I know they got, they sort of got shafted by the county this year. I would support the Ruby sponsor, which is the $5,000, if we could swing it any way. And like I said, if we, if we could swing a Sapphire and anybody wants to pitch in to get that up to, from their outreach budget, or personally, I would be willing to do either or both to help out.
We did budget, if you don't remember, this year, for the first year, I think, 3,000 for table sponsorships in addition to any other funds that you guys may have. But just 3,000, I think.
Okay. Well, when I sit down, I'll try and bring something back, not as an answer, but as a starting point to close the loop next time.
Tell you what I'd be willing to do, if the council went with the Sapphire, I'd be willing to do 1,000 from my outreach towards a Ruby of 5,000. If you're looking at, if Joey did 1,000, I did 1,000, there's 4,000 right there plus, which is another 1,000 then.
What do we got, 1,500? We have 1,500.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, I'd be willing to kick in some, to do a Ruby table. 5,000. Okay, any other elected official reports?
I guess we're all aware now of what's going on with the Jefferson County Open Space over there at Crown Hill. I'm not bringing that up in a big, I'm looking at very small, small nugget. So, I've had some people ask me if there's, they're doing, the Jeffco Open Space is doing a survey, trying to figure out what to do, you know, how to move forward. But the problem is they're not really advertising it very well. And so, they're really not getting out to the citizens that they have this right to do the survey. And so, what I guess I'm kind of wondering, is it appropriate for us, maybe just to sound like a little postcard saying, if you're interested in this, you know, you have an opportunity to take a survey to our citizens, so we kind of make sure they don't...
We were planning to put some information in our communication pieces, Mayor's Matters, the Connections Newsletter. They do have signs up at the park. They do have stuff on their website, Jefferson County website.
You may not know it's there. And there's some people who, you know, may not know until, I guess, I wasn't looking at us taking the position more as just making sure people are informed and they know it's kind of coming so that that way they don't come back and say, well, we didn't feel like we got input on this. And I want everybody to have, you know, at least an equal opportunity for input.
It's on the website also, Jefferson County website. You have to go to another, there's a link or another tab. And it's, what they have on there, though, is the proposed. They never put on what was gonna be final. So, they're going back to the proposed, though, and they're gonna rehash that and get comments. It was mainly some exercise-type equipment with replacing what they already have there and a shade shelter and some new restrooms, I think was the gist of it. But it is on the website if you dig down a little bit on the Open Space website. Yeah, and we'll get it in as many places as we can so our citizens know, because we are getting a lot of calls too.
Mr. Pond?
I was just gonna say, it's worth drilling in there because I shot you an email and then immediately went into, onto the Jeffco website and drilled down. And yeah, I agree, it doesn't show final, like, approved because it's got a little bit more information, actually, than what ultimately they were about to do. But the boards, the design boards are on there and some of the proposals, as well as all the comments from their, from their initial kind of open house slash survey, which, if you take five minutes to read through all that, they got a lot of feedback already last April. And so, it's not like this, you know, wasn't out there. And it's worth, you know, I'm not disagreeing with them putting this back out there, but it's worth, for the sake of answering questions or being grounded, to just dig in there and read that a little bit.
If you looked at, emailed at Bruce, and it's like, Thursday has a link right to the plan. It's, yeah, I didn't go to the whole site.
Any more council or elected official reports, staff reports? Go home.